Good evening. Tonight is the March 25th, 2024 Lakeville Select Board Meeting. Is there anybody recording the meeting besides Lakeham who's also streaming this evening? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number One. We've got a pretty packed agenda tonight and we are meeting with some other boards later. So we will try to get through as much as we can in the next hour or so. So announcements for tonight. Right off the bat, I just did want to acknowledge that the Select Board did receive a few comments and complaints about last week's CBA meeting. So, you know, we will take the appropriate time to investigate any of the things that folks have sent in. We heard there might have been some unprofessional comments made. We'll certainly follow up with those boards and speak with their chair to understand some of the logistics behind it. But just wanted to at least acknowledge that and let you folks know that we did receive some of the emails that were sent in. Do either my colleagues like to make any comment on that before moving forwards?
Okay.
Town's annual election will be taking place on April 1st from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Loon Pond Lodge located at Ted Williams Camp. Town Clerk would like to remind the residents of the following. All vote by mail and absentee ballots requested have been mailed as of March 15th, 10 days ago. All ballots need to be returned by April 1st by 8:00 PM. All requests for vote by mail or absentee ballots need to be received by 5:00 PM on March 25th, so 30 minutes ago. This is, take a look at it, your last three-member board meeting. So next time you see us, it'll be time to reorganize with a five-member board for the first time. So we'll find some more seats and some more microphones. As part of the citizen petition which defined the ballot for the upcoming election, you'll be able to vote for up to three members on the select board. So it'll be a three-year, a two-year, and a one-year position, but you're going to see them all together on the specimen ballot. So go to the town clerk's page, look at the ballot. You'll see it says vote for three. You don't have to. You can vote for one, for two, for three, but no more than three. Vote for all four of them or else your ballot won't count. You're not ranking your choices, right? So you're not saying like this person is my number one, this person is my number two. You're just voting for one or two or three people that you'd like to represent the town on the select board going forward. Top vote getter gets three years, second two years, third person gets a one-year term. And then when those terms expire, they'll all turn over to three years in the future. Also, the second mailing of the annual town census has gone out on March 19th. And I got mine because I forgot to send it in. So when the mail went today. There will be a rabies clinic to be held on Saturday, April 6th at the DPW Garage. By the way, while you're there, you'll see the lovely new office building. Dogs must be leashed and will be from 1:30 to 3:30 PM. And cats must be in a carrier will be from 3:00 to 3:30 PM. Please visit the website for more information under news and announcements. A reminder that dog licenses are due by April 30th. If you no longer have your dog, please call the town's clerk office to let them know. And then I'd like to, if we can, give Chief O'Brien a couple of minutes to give us one special announcement on somebody from the department. And then we'll move forward.
Thank you, Bob. Proud to share that Deputy Chief Camp Grant has been selected to the National Fire Academy's Executive Fire Officer Program. It's a highly competitive program. Fire officers, chief fire officers from across the country apply for it and very few are chosen each year. And it's a two-year program. Should be traveling down to the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland three or four times over the next two years to complete some programs. There's some virtual training as well. It tops off or ends off with a capstone project. And the capstone project will be aligned with a need we have locally. So it's, there's nothing but value and it's all paid for by the federal government. There's no local cost. So it's a great program. Her credentials and her education history, things like that came into play in the fact that the Fire Department in the town supported her application.
That's great. Fantastic, Chief. That's really good news. You know, please do thank her for us and I'm sure we all will when we see her.
When does the program start officially?
She has to accept the appointment and then she'll go down in August or September. There's two dates that she has to choose from. It'll be like an orientation to the program. They'll orientate her to the program and they'll kick off with the first training. And then she'll be off on her way with a bunch of assignments and things like that.
Oh, that's fantastic. Kudos.
Yeah.
Big deal.
All right. Thank you, Chief. We'll see you in a few minutes.
All right.
All right. Are there any other announcements? Otherwise, we'll pass it over to Mr. Nunes. All yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two things. Last week, I met with the town accountant and the treasurer collecting regarding opioid settlements. The town has been receiving some settlement money that the state and others have come together with pharmaceutical companies. And the settlement is that communities would be receiving some settlement money. In fiscal '23, the town received just a little more than $8,900. That money went into free cash because there was no plan put in place. Fiscal year '24, I think last week, over the last several weeks, we received a little more than $10,000. So tomorrow, I am going to meet with Chief Perkins, Chief O'Brien, and our health agent to maybe put a plan together about how to use, what we can use the $10,000 for. And that will be an annual payment, I think, for the next 15 or 20 years. So it would be good if the town had a plan in place moving forward. I'll keep you all informed on that. And second thing is, last week, Public Safety Representatives Chief O'Brien, Chief Perkins, myself, met with Superintendent Alan Strauss regarding finally a one-stop regional grant application with SERPAD. Would obviously be the towns of Free Town and Lakeville. We will express an interest in applying for the grant. It will develop, the grant will allow the communities, the district, to develop an active shooter hostile event plan. There'll be training exercises involved and we'll be working with SERPAD. They will take the lead in drafting the grant application. So both chiefs, Chief Perkins and Chief O'Brien are on board.
Excellent.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Nunes? No? Okay. Then we move on to number three. Discuss impossible vote to approve the Select Board meeting minutes of February 26th, 2024 and March 11th, 2024. Tracy, thank you. These are very long meetings. Does anybody have any comments on 1st February 26th?
I do. I can, um...
Sure.
I mean, I can just pass these on. They're more grammatical. But on the second page where the vote is upon a motion made, if you can just add the word "by", I'll give you this, Tracy, in the second one, the same thing. At the bottom of page two, in the last paragraph, three-quarters of the way down, over to the right where it says the last time the dog bit was because that person was trying to steal the dog and taking it off the chain, taking it off the chain. I would just say that the dog owner or maybe Ms. Taterell said that because it just would flow better there, I think. And that's pretty much it. I'll just give that to Tracy so she has it.
Okay. Leah, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do have one on page 10 at the top. I thought it was upon a motion made by Chair Day and seconded by Member Carboni.
I got that too, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if Tracy can check that one.
No, I think you're right, Leah. Okay.
I just had one thing which was on, was that all? Leah, I'm sorry.
Yep.
On page five, the paragraph which starts with Member Fabian asked to have, third line down, Chairman Day said he has no desire to remove the animal from the property or to destroy it. Please feel free to go back and watch the video. My recollection was I said I pulled the board, just confirmed that there was no desire to do that that time. It wasn't specifically myself. But if the video says otherwise, feel free to keep it. But that's all I have for that one.
Do you want me to make a motion to approve the Select Board minutes of February 26th with corrections?
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Oh, sorry, second.
That's all right.
Take notes.
Tracy, you got everything you need?
I'll give it to you.
Do that. Yep. Okay. All members in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to March 11th, 2024. Does anybody have anything for that date? I did not.
I did. Under page two, under Discuss impossible vote on recommendations on site plan for 210 Kenneth Welch, I would just put underneath that paragraph, the Select Board had no comments to submit. And then I know I spoke with Tracy briefly today. There was a whole section that I know needs to be kind of duplicated in here that I know she would be removing. Other than that, I didn't have anything else.
No, I just have the duplicate.
All right.
All right. Well, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the March 11th Select Board meeting minutes with the corrections identified.
Second.
Okay, good motion and second. All members in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you again, Tracy. Moving on to item number four. Discussion impossible vote on the American Rescue Plan Act project. So, Mr. Nunes, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what Todd has, our town accountant and myself prepared, it's in your packet. The first page is a summary of what is available, the available balances, and some of the projects that I guess were voted on by the town to submit to both Plymouth County and directly to the federal government. As you will see, some of those projects hasn't been fully expended. So Todd will be here if you have any questions regarding the balances. I did send out an email to each department to see if they would be interested in submitting projects through ARPA funding. It was a very good response. The projects that you will see here, capital project request ARPA funding, are not on the capital plan. Some of the department heads did submit plans that were on the capital plan. So basically, we have two lists. We have the capital project request ARPA funding and then we have the capital plan that the town develops over a five-year period. And then the last page is what the US Department of Treasury says we can spend ARPA funds on. The Capital Planning Committee, we are meeting on Thursday. So we will review, obviously, the capital plan and the requests for ARPA funding for several of these projects. I'm not quite sure what the process is, if you want to come back at another meeting to finalize the list because we will need to submit the list to Plymouth County. I did reach out to Treasurer O'Brien today to see what the timetable is. He has yet to get back to me, but I'm sure he will. And once we get that, I will forward it to the Select Board.
I don't know how my members feel. I personally would like to give the Capital Improvement Plan Committee a chance to look at this. And then for this amount of money where we're one meeting away from a few new members, as long as the treasurer doesn't come back and say he needs it like yesterday. But he's usually pretty amicable to...
Yes, exactly.
I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things on here. How do you guys feel?
So knowing what we have in front of us tonight to select a location for a fire station, should that happen, I think we may need some water to get there and possibly a traffic light. So I don't know if I missed those somewhere.
No. In fact, I'd asked Bob earlier today to stop in for something else because there could be a water extension potentially for a fire station. And then whether or not, I think Parks had requested a well or something for the North Fields, which I know is a little further, but I don't know if we could reach it with a water extension in order. If that would just be an astronomical amount of money.
I think we got that late entry by the Arts Council.
Yes.
They had a total change in their planning. So I guess we would need to fit some of these things in here under the requests agreed.
Yes, I did receive that Friday afternoon after it was sent to the packet. Also, the project will have to be completed by, I believe, June 30th of 2025.
The funds need to be committed in '24, but we have through 2026 to fully expend. But they have to be committed this calendar year.
Yes.
So December 31st, 2026, it needs to be spent? Okay.
So I know they need to be committed by the end of this calendar year, but it sounds like Plymouth County at least is looking for an earlier commitment so they can reallocate.
Yes.
And that's the date that you're waiting on right now?
Yes, exactly. We don't want them to reallocate Lakeville's funds to other communities.
Nope. We'd rather take others.
So we can't encumber it, basically. Oh, we could if we committed to a project. But it doesn't necessarily have to be like spent, spent, '12, '26.
Oh, yeah. Expended at the end.
Okay, expended. Okay, I just wanted to see if we could...
Has to be done and spent, right?
Correct. Yeah, we have to prove of payment, so to speak.
Okay.
Yep.
And the list only includes one year fiscal year '25 for firefighter staffing. I know the chief is going to submit in a safer grant, but it does not include staffing beyond fiscal year '25 for firefighters, for the four firefighters.
The best-case scenario, if we get the safer grant and then we're using a smaller number.
Right.
All right. Is there a consensus on any votes on these tonight? Or is it, do we need more information given recent changes?
Yeah, I'm not really looking for votes this evening because I know the department heads would like to come in and make their, you know, presentation and advocate.
Sounds good.
So like, you know, I'm going to go to the Capital Planning Committee. Todd and I will be there on Thursday. And then, you know, we have to make some decisions, probably by mid-April or so, at least to the county.
Okay. All right, that sounds good.
Do we know if any of these are like in the works? Mainly the skate park, do we know if that's not in the works at all?
What was that?
The skate park? So no money has been on that one?
Money has been expended.
Okay.
Correct. But certainly that project would be a good candidate for use of some of these funds.
So on the white request page, none of these have been committed yet. These are possible.
That is correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Those came from the department heads within the last two weeks.
Okay. All right, so we'll come back at a future meeting, it sounds like? All right, sounds good. We'll chew on this for a little bit. Leah, Lorraine, any other questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, first of all, since the fire station is going to be moved from Precinct Street to 18 over here, there's some significant increases in costs in the water line and in the traffic, you know, line. I mean, that easily could be $400,000, $500,000 altogether. So to relieve the taxpayers of some of that burden, it'd be a good idea to potentially use some of this opium money. But what I really wanted to talk about was, two years ago, we got a state grant for a traffic light at Bridge Street.
Correct.
And the highway director has done the traffic study. It was done a year ago. And in order for us to move ahead with the project, the town has to allocate $200,000 or 10% of the $2 million grant to move forward. Nasty OT has already agreed. They will release the money as long as we provide this $200,000. So it hasn't been addressed in a year now. So I would highly recommend, the way the state is going now in, you know, eliminating grants, you know, left and right, that we try to do something about that as soon as possible. So I hope that the board considers that for an opportunity.
Was that Bridge Street?
Bridge Street, yeah. Bridge Street and 105.
Did it come back at, was it even $2 million or 2.1 or 2.2 somewhere around there?
1 million or something like that, but that's a significant amount. I can't believe the traffic light is going to cost $2 million.
Yeah, you can mean both.
Whatever. So I hope you consider that because I think that's pretty important. It's one of the most, it is the dangerous intersection, you know, in town besides 19 here and 105 is catching up. There's a lot of accidents there. So anyway, so if you could consider that, that'd be great.
No, thanks for bringing that forward again. We'll have to see if that falls under the infrastructure category or not. You know, it was very specific to water and some other things, but the other one might be a big enough envelope.
I would ask that, you know, Bob, while I put the state and actually talk to Franklin because he has all the contacts and so forth, they're ready to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, so we'll come back to that. Sounds like thank you, Todd. Thank you, Bob, for that. Quite the list. There's a number of things there. It'd be nice to see. And we'll move to number five. So discuss impossible vote to accept the proposed fire station site location recommendation from the Fire Station Building Committee. So Member Carboni, I'll let you take that away.
Excellent. I'd like to invite Kyle Robinson and Rick Palmero to the table, the chief. I know Nate was here, but...
Scared him already.
Scared him already.
All right, so I'll just open this up before, you know, I pass this over to Rick for any questions. So the Fire Station Building Committee met a week and a half ago and received a very thorough presentation from our architect, Secosio and Associates as the committee was charged with identifying, you know, a proposed location for the fire station. So this particular presentation reviewed the three identified locations at Ted Williams Camp. One was over on Precinct Street and the other two were on this side of Ted Williams Camp. So the committee, you know, reviewed a matrix that was provided as to, you know, certain criteria. And there was, one definitely stood out from the others. So the committee met last week to vote a recommendation to the Select Board. And I believe that letter is in this packet for us. So is there anything, I guess I'll turn it over to you, Rick, if you can.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Richard Palmero. I'm Palmero Associates. You know Chief O'Brien. This is Kyle Robinson. Kyle's from Secosio Associates. I just thought I'd give you a brief update as to where we've been and where we're at right now. And then we'll turn it over to Kyle and we can talk about the site selection matrix. So we've been going through a process. And in fall of 2023, there was a request for proposals or qualifications for designers, architects. And there was four firms that submitted packages. And the committee reviewed those and narrowed it down to three candidates. And the three candidates were interviewed. And Secosio Associates was raised, became the top-ranked finalist. And the process was then to negotiate a contract with Secosio Associates. The interviews were conducted in October, mid-October of last year. Secosio was brought under contract in mid-December. And they immediately began the project programming, which is understanding the department, the department's needs, the equipment and apparatus that the department has at this point, and looking at growth projections within the town and within the department. And that programming, from that programming, we're able to put together a facility that we, that will meet all of the program needs very, very early. Early diagrams have been created from that to sort of test fit the different sites to see where the facility would work best. And, you know, from that, and once we select a site, we'll then begin the refinement of our design and start putting together all of the documents so that we can get some very effective cost estimates. So we've been, we're right on track with our schedule. The programming was complete mid-February. And from there, the designers sort of test fit the three sites so that we could look at how things work. We presented our results on March 13th at the Building Committee. And we're here today to gain your support for the site that was chosen. After today, assuming that we walk away with a site, we'll begin our investigations, the surveys of the site, geotechnical analysis, you know, design of our different systems, all of the components that are necessary so that we can put all of our pricing together and be prepared for a fall town meeting with a full facility and full facility budget for the town's presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kyle. We're going to go through the matrix right now and let you know kind of what we looked at in making the decisions or recommendations. And then we'd like to sort of walk through the basic floor plan and some of the elevations. These are very early, early documents. And from this, we'll start refining those and coming up with a final design. But this is just enough to get us so that we can realize that we can fit the facility on the sites that we're looking at.
Okay, may I ask one question before we get going, just so that we all have an idea? I know, again, I know it's super early and the actual design has to happen, but roughly what kind of square footage are we looking at for the proposal versus what we have today? Just so residents have an idea. Is this 10% bigger, 20% bigger? Just to, or is it even far too early to even answer that question?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with what the existing facility is as far as size.
I don't know it off the top of my head.
It's no comparison. And so if you look at, if you look at the, the easiest way to describe it is you look at a facility that was designed and built many, many years ago. It didn't take into accommodation the local codes and ordinances that we have today. It didn't take into accommodation for male, female firefighters. It's dorm room technology or theory where everyone sleeps in one room. You know, in the new, it didn't, those facilities back then didn't take into consideration hazardous materials and how to properly decontaminate after an event. So there's a whole aspect of new fire station design that comes into play. I'm not exactly sure where we're at square footage-wise, but right now we're looking at, we're looking at just over 24,000 square feet. And that's before we get through our refinement.
All right.
Lakeville's never had a purpose-built fire station. It was an existing facility that was modified to become a fire station. And then it was added on to ad hoc several times to roll with the town. There's been, there's never been a, from the start, we've never had a fire station specifically designed to be a fire station.
Okay.
So this would be a first for the town.
First new ladder truck, first new station maybe.
What are the things we're surely going to do as we get through, as we go through this? And it's part of the public information is that we're going to have a couple of tours. Allow folks to see the existing facilities so they can understand. And then we'll put diagrammatic plans there so people can realize the differences that you're really benefiting from.
All right. Sorry to interrupt. I apologize. No problem. As Rick mentioned, so through this process, we came out with somewhere between 24,000 and 25,000 square feet for the new facility as a place to start. We took that, took it on the three sites, options that were presented. And we really, initially, the first, the first statement is all three sites are able to accommodate this size station. So all three sites were buildable. We moved forward. As you look through the matrix, it is somewhat compared to each other on some aspects. So some aspects are buildability. Is a site able to take the building? That's pretty straightforward. It either is or it isn't. Some of the other things, like response time, we'll say that is really based compared to each other. So the one that gets the highest score is better compared to the other two sites. And then they're knocked down score-wise based on kind of their relative usefulness compared to the kind of chosen or preferred site. We took this kind of as, you know, after the first step of, do they fit? We took it as, you know, each site individually, kind of look at it, what is pluses and minuses on those sites. We can go through some of those. But in general, what was found is the precinct site is essentially a bowl. So it's been collecting runoff and water. So there's some concerns that it either is a wetlands or could be designated as a wetlands just by the shape of it. And then obviously with a bowl, we're going to have to level that out. So it creates quite a bit of fill just to make that site buildable. We called, so on this thing, Ted Williams Camp site, that's the more internal site off of Bedford Street. And then the final site was right on Bedford Street here. And then the, the final site was right on Bedford Street here at the entrance right across from the police station here. And both of those ranked pretty similar, except for Ted Williams Campsite, um, is just a logistical problem. You have to, everybody's got, every, every apparatus, everything, every department employee has to come in and out of the Ted Williams Camp Road to access it. And there's only one way in and out of the site. Where being on Bedford Street gives you the ability to directly connect to Bedford Street and alleviates any congestion that could be going on with the camp. So glad to answer questions, go through, through this in more detail. I don't wanna overdo it.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question before we get any deeper. How did that Ted Williams even get into this? Lorraine, would you know?
Just based on the feasibility study, was identified through that.
Okay.
And that's what, you know, we, we went off of.
Yeah, I just originally thought it was gonna be just a question of the other two. And I know this has been going on for a while, but, um, I was just kind of curious, um, how it ended up in there.
Cause they're all, they're almost the same, just kind of pivoted 90 degrees.
Right.
Yeah, so the, in the, in the examples, um, that you have, we took the layout, we will say we based it off of the Bedford Street, Street site. And then we just kind of took that and set it on there with some minor adjustments when you hit them. You will see, if you look close enough, the Ted Williams Campsite actually needs more pavement, um, and it takes up more area because the apparatus have to come in off of Camp Street. And basically all the circulation around the building has to be done onsite. Where either Bedford or Precinct, if, if you're coming in from different entrances, the, the apparatus can exit and leave a lot more efficiently than being all off of one kind of location. But in general, all three sites will work. It was generally felt that Bedford Street is a better site for, both environmentally. Um, there's, there's some cost benefits to that site. Even with some, there are some areas that are gonna cost more because of its location, but in general, it's, uh, believed to be more cost-effective to build on that site. And taking, uh, the chief's, uh, you know, knowledge and response time into effect, um, really that weighed very heavily in the score of this, that it is the most efficient of the three sites for a fire department standpoint.
No, not yet, hold on, we're still listening.
So the guidance that I provided them, um, in, I wanna say that I'm not an expert on the quality of, of soil and wetlands and things like that, so I stopped short, but the guidance that I provided them is, is our intersection at, uh, at 105 and 18 is the hub, this, that allows us to have one fire station in town. So, uh, the closer we are to that intersection, the more property we can protect, the more lives we can save. And that, that was their guidance. And further we move away from that hub is, 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 you know, basically takes away from our mission. And that's why we're building a fire station, to save lives and protect property. So that's, that's the guidance I provided. That's, that's what I stuck to. And then when I reached the boundary of my knowledge and my expertise, I just climbed up and, and listened and, and relied on them to, 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 to take the wheel and carry this home. And there was things that I withheld because we, we live in a small town and you get a lot of feedback about the sites and everybody has an opinion. But I think the, the key here was to let the experts do what the experts do and, and when they asked me a question, to answer it as best I could.
Appreciate that. Did you have something else?
No, no.
I was just gonna ask as well is what kind of, um, forward outlook were you doing in these designs? You're looking 50 years out, 40 years out? Like what kind of growth rate were you analyzing when coming up with these preliminary thoughts?
So we, we try to cover 10 years out, cause anything after 10 years is very difficult to analyze. But, um, you know, we're really trying to accommodate from that 10, you know, cover the 10, see what could happen up to 20.
Okay.
The building's really, you know, 50 plus years, but from a space standpoint, you don't wanna overbuild, you know? But, um, the conversation is really where does the chief see the department in 10 years? And then we kind of move off of that and see what that is. If there's significant growth, sometimes it goes over. But it's really a 10 to 20-year growth model, try to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you.
And what I would offer them when, when that discussion happened is there's trends in apparatus and fire apparatus tend to be multipurpose now versus specialized. So you can see our new ladder truck has a fire pump and hose and, and can function as a fire engine, but is also a ladder truck. And you'll see that continuing with our next engine will be a tanker and a fire engine. So you'll see the fleet either stay the same or, or shrink, but you'll see growth in, in personnel as the town grows because it's still a labor-intensive endeavor. So, so you'll see some kind of things that maybe don't jive when you look at the plans. You'll see a, you'll see accommodation for apparatus that's very similar to what we have now. But then you'll see expansion for, or room for growth as far as personnel. And you would think that the two don't jive, but they actually do.
We're running this one.
No, I know, I just know a few questions were coming up, so I didn't wanna jump in. So.
We didn't wanna take up too much of your time.
Yeah, we get a busy night.
Glad to go through every single, uh, aspect here if you'd like, but we just felt we'd get in front of you and.
I'll ask the select board, do you want any additional presentation from the gentleman while they're here, or do you feel you've got?
Can we just go over, the two things I have circled are utilities, if someone could explain that to me? And also locational, location, local traffic impact, I'm not sure. Because, all right, so if you can just go over that.
So utilities has, um, you know, it's a number of different things. So obviously the two Ted Williams campsites don't have water. The water would have to be extended from the police station. So that's kind of a, a down point to them. But all other drainage, so utilities take site drainage, site, um, projected, um, septic systems into account, all that into account. And precinct is, um, scored lower because of those issues, not necessarily water utilities or power or those kind of things. So it takes site, site, particularly site drainage or containment of storm water on the site into account on those. And again, we haven't done, um, kind of geotechnical soil research on these sites yet. We've got some general kind of national knowledge of the area and, you know, basis of what we're anticipating would be there. But in general, we see those three sites as equal, we took those as equal from a kind of soils standpoint. And it's really came down to storm sewage or storm water containment and runoff on those scores.
What was the second one?
Um, and then location, local traffic impact.
So we were looking there at really what's, what's in the immediate surroundings. So it's a combination of, um, the impact on your main intersection here and the, where the calls mostly come from in the department. With, um, Precinct Street for probably 90% of your calls, you're going, they will be going through the intersection. Where the Bedford Street and the Ted Williams Camp will greatly reduce the number of times they have to go through that intersection. It also takes into account the neighboring buildings. So in precinct, there's more residential houses right adjacent to the site. We're over here, it's a little more, I mean, you have the camp, you're a little more isolated from residential, so they gain a little point in that. But I think the real traffic piece of that is their, um, ability to get through the town without colliding with the main pieces of traffic.
And for me, the, the camp option is, was a horrible option because it was the most disruptive to, to, to Ted Williams functions. It, uh, it left us with the option of going right and traveling through the camp to get to, to calls to the south, which is what we wanted to avoid doing. And we could also be caught in gridlock when there's major events like the triathlon, tri, triathlon, uh, you know what I'm trying to say? Or soccer, soccer matches and things like that, tournaments. So it, just an awful traffic impact at that location. The other one, I remember the negatives were that we would have to use the COA's driveway. So it's affecting use of the COA to, to get our vehicles to the back of the, the station when they did the, the, the test fit on that location. And they weren't sure that some of the radiuses could be accomplished, um, making the turns off of precinct with our apparatus. So those are two negative things, I think, that, that caused the score to go down as well. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right.
The other aspect of that is that the Bedford parcel, uh, the way it's designed right now, all of the vehicles returning, uh, or leaving would be direct to Bedford. We could, we do have an opportunity where some of the vehicles would return and come on the camp road, but, uh, the intent is not to impact camp road with any emergency response vehicles. So it keeps us out of that congested area completely.
Yeah, the Bedford Street site allows, um, staff to come in off a camp road. So the, the call firefighters who are coming.
Just normal traffic.
Come through there and all apparatus can leave separately of, of either local traffic or the fire department's traffic. They're just general nature, there'll be apparatus leaving as other, uh, fire personnel are arriving at the station. And we want to kind of minimize any conflict between those two processes.
Just to simplify, the emergency lights are on and we're going to call emergency. It's, we don't touch the camp road. It's all direct onto 18. And that was kind of a big, a big deciding factor as well.
Yeah, I know, it was, um, the presentation, you know, just clarified a lot of, you know, like you could actually visualize it and it actually made sense, you know, based on, the presentation. So, um, you know, the fire station building committee met briefly this week, um, gave them a chance to digest the information that was presented. And then we called for a vote and the committee voted, um, to recommend to the select board as the proposed location would be, um, the Bedford Street location for the fire station.
All right. Uh, I know Brenna had a question, or I'll give her an opportunity to. Welcome, Ms. Donahue.
Brenna Donahue, perfectly. Do you have a copy of the deed for Ted Williams?
Where are we going with this?
It's a genuine question, not a gotcha, because in a couple months I could be on that board.
Yep.
And I wanna be aware of the issues that we are potentially setting ourselves up to face. Because the original deed has voted on at Town Hall for this property. States.
Which, which meeting? Because there was multiple town meetings for this property.
This one was, where is it? Did I leave it with you?
And we're, we're very limited on time, so.
I know, but this is important because this is a potential lawsuit. So I want to know the answer before you select this location.
So we are allowing them to potentially progress with this location. It is possible that they still find something that they have to come back to us and say, that's not going to work.
I understand that, but to me, this just seems like an issue to get out of the way earlier into the process than later, because that's more time, more money wasted. So just give me two minutes and I'll get where I have to go.
Okay.
It was, it was voted that the vote passed under Article Four at the special town meeting of May 12th, 1986. It is hereby amended to provide in its entirety as follows, that the selectmen may be authorized to acquire, purchase, may be authorized to acquire by purchase eminent domain or otherwise the land with buildings thereupon on, known as Bedford Street, basically the camp. For the municipal purpose of acquiring and development of municipal outdoor recreational and athletic facilities and for the construction and recreate reconstruction of such facilities. That's in the deed.
That was the town meeting article.
Correct. That was voted upon.
Correct.
And I don't know if this was amended after the fact, so it could be null and void. But that's the original. Eighty-one of the select board handbook on managing municipal properties. Towns may purchase or take land only for a clearly identifiable pub, identifiable public purpose and the town meeting's actions may be invalidated if the land was taken for a non-public purpose. Courts have held that towns may acquire property and lease it to others, but only if the property will be used for the public purpose for which it was acquired. And I'm bringing this up because there is a former chairman of the parks, Daryl Burnier, who is very upset at what's happening. And he has threatened to go to the people who sold it to the town if this is not done in a correct way or if it's not done right. So my question is, how are you avoiding that?
By looking back at the process that was used to build the building that we're sitting in right now. At that time, the land was deemed not to be chapter 97 land and that this was a allowable municipal usage.
Okay.
Of which the same process is going to be utilized for potentially a fire station in one of these locations. So we've, you know, anticipated this discussion and again, reached out to Town Council to just say triple check. And they've all gone back and said, yes, we've confirmed through this building's process that this is not chapter 97 land. And that will, you know, we can play that out with the fire station building committee some more if necessary, but at this point in time, everybody is confident that if this is, you know, one of the options selected, that everything has been vetted. When the police station was built, and for those of you that have been here longer than me, please correct me, there was a minor land swap that did have to take place. So they had to get some land bank to set that aside as conservation land, couple of acres or so, something like that. I've heard accusations that there was a fine or fee paid for the police station, which to best of my knowledge is incorrect, but continues to be repeated. So at, at this point in time, I'm unaware of a procedural reason why they couldn't at least continue to investigate that location.
So the only thing that I could see being pushed back for that is that this land was just trees, if I'm remembering correctly. This was just a parking lot in brush and trees. That has a stream, it has walking trails, it's where the old haunted house was. So that could arguably be impacting the park. And again, this is not me anti-fire station because I think it's a decent location because it would be great if there's injuries in the park to have the fire department right there. But these are potential pushbacks and just things to consider.
No, that's fair to consider. I think this is close enough to Bedford Street where it would not impact the old haunted house location. I think you actually see the old buildings in the maps there.
Someone had described it probably as my.
But all those things would be, you know, analyzed through permitting and research and whatnot to make sure we're not, you know, hurting any of that.
Just doing it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
We have to start somewhere.
No, I understand. I've had, we've had this discussion like in places, but I wanted to have it on the record.
That's fine.
So that it could be referenced when these come up, that we did pay it in these mind, we did pay attention to them and we did brainstorm what they would be.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, nobody is certainly saying that like any book tonight means we're breaking ground tomorrow or anything, there's a whole other.
As much as I would like.
Two-year process that happens.
And I just wanted to add too, that, um, I know that the fire station building committee, you know, will be keeping the parks commission, you know, informed with, you know, our progress too.
Well, that's why we came because.
That's what we agreed upon, you know, when we started, that we understood that there was, you know, involvement there.
Yeah.
You know, out of, you know, we respect the Parks Commission, so.
Paul? Let's just make it brief, because we do have a lot of other business to get to. Appreciate it.
Paula Holt, Twin Oaks Road, Lakeville. My only question to the group is have you, or are you doing any kind of a survey or research on the impact of a fire station in a public park? Especially this public park.
I think the recommendation of the site takes into account that we wanna stay clear of the park. I don't think it's, it's kind of common sense that having first responders close by a public area increases the safety of those who use the park. Say if you have a, a jogger or somebody goes down with a heart attack. So you have the benefit of our proximity, but you also have the benefit of our, our lack of use of the, of the road here. We're, we're going directly onto 18. If we're heading out towards 140, we're going down to the intersection and going right, we're not going through the park. These, you were heard during your meeting, you know, that we went to the, the Parks Committee meeting that we went to and, and those thoughts that you had, those concerns that you had, got repeated during the, the, uh, the committee meetings. And, and part of what, where we landed, uh, is reflects in what, what your concerns were. Is that accurate?
Yeah. Okay, the, uh, my concern with the impact is how it's gonna affect the parks revenue.
So my recommendation then would be that we, we make a request to the building committee to consider that as they move forward, now that they will potentially have a location to do that.
Thank you.
Make a question. All right, um, I'll give, is there, is there any resident who has something they'd like to say on this before, as a potential vote taken? And we have a few that are interested in this project. Okay, um, seeing none, does anybody wish to?
I just wanna say, um, one more thing that, um, what we know going forward is that we could see some major growth in town people-wise. You know, we know we have a couple, they haven't been approved, but they're beginning the process and we, we can't decide in two or three years when our population has already, you know, as the select board, we, this is what our job is to look forward and we do that by, you know, getting the opinions of these professionals to try to help us make the best decision. to try to help us make the best decision possible. And, you know, I for one always, I wanted this building on Route eighteen because I think it serves a purpose being on Route eighteen. So I, you know, my confusion is, you know, the previous feasibility study said something else. So, you know, it's like a lot of, and, and there is some scientific basis for some of these things, but, you know, it's still subjective in some ways, but I do think we need to select a, a location so that we can continue to move forward.
Yeah, nothing's going to be perfect.
Right, right, so. But this study now has been going on for three years, so we gotta, we gotta move, move along.
All right, um, no other questions then? Number Carbone, would you like to do the honors?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the select board support the recommend, or accept the recommendation, the proposed fire station site location as that of Bedford Street. Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, option C, Bedford Street. All members in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so thank you very much. So the committee will continue investigating that area and start getting to work.
All right, we have a meeting Wednesday evening.
You've got a very busy night, but what we do is we look forward to coming back and giving you an update. So we can spend more time on the design components.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out, I appreciate it.
See you Wednesday.
All right, thank you.
Don't go too far, chief.
Thank you for that.
All right, number six, this would have been discussed and possible vote on the request from the fire chief to adopt a comprehensive emergency management plan, which was very comprehensive. I have not had an opportunity to go through the whole thing as of this evening. Did anybody have an interest in bringing this back at a later time?
Mr. Chair, can I introduce somebody?
Oh, you absolutely can.
Please.
Um, this is Cadet Mae Greeley. She's a junior at Mass Maritime Academy. And she was an intern for the Lakeville Fire Department starting in June of twenty-three.
Okay.
And the, the plan they see before her, she carried the load of the work. She did all the gathering of data, she used the template that we used from MIMA and she populated it. She worked, she coordinated with Deputy Chief Pam Grant for the first draft that was submitted to the department heads for, for consideration in the TA.
Nice, job well done.
Thank you.
She did an awesome job.
That's great.
Yeah, it's a very detailed would be the two words I'd use in that plan, so.
I would say that, you know, recommendation to your superiors would be a four-point O plus, you know, grade on that.
Nice job.
So I actually did get through the whole thing and I sent, um.
Russell.
Yeah, I sent a couple of things to the chief, but in the meantime, I think he had corrected the couple of things. And that's where our second thing came from, it was just, um.
There was two versions, the one that was sent out and it was my mistake. I sent out the, the version that came out of the deputy's office. And then there's a second version that, that basically reflected all the remarks from the TA and from the different department heads, and that's, I apologize for that.
But just so you guys know, um, because flooding is near and dear to my heart here. Under, on page twelve of one-ten, so as you're going through it, if you can just consider and maybe discuss it with the chief, I don't want to be the only one saying it should be changed. Page twelve, yeah.
Of the first draft that we received?
Of the first draft, yeah. Well, actually in the final two, I don't think this was changed. It said planned or anticipated incidents right in the middle. Incidents that can be planned for in advance, such as a hurricane, a windstorm, extreme temperatures, major crowd events or VIP visits, et cetera. Because under the, uh, on page fourteen, the second dot there goes right into flooding. I asked the chief if he would consider putting flooding in there, just because it's a big thing in our, our community.
Could, could we, unless this is required terminology, I mean, could we even just say natural disaster or?
I don't know.
I can, I can include flooding. And what's nice about this plan is there's a mechanism. It basically has to be updated and approved every five years, but between that time period and the years in between, there's a mechanism for altering or modifying the thing. I just have to log in the modifications so you can see them in five years.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so other than that, you know, it was just a couple of other things that you had gone ahead and corrected anyways. So I would like to see it come back.
Yeah, I think given an opportunity, that'd be great. There's one thing in here, and it could be a longer discussion, so I hate to bring it up tonight. But I noticed that the current fire station is still listed as the primary EOC, where this building I thought was built to be an EOC and feels much more capable.
Yeah, yeah.
Having worked in EOC myself.
So this, so this, obviously, what really happens in Lakeville is the, the EOC is wherever I am. I have a laptop and I communicate with MIMA through my cellphone and the laptop. I can request assets through the thing, because I'm also responding to calls. What this is, is almost like what we strive to be, if we had the resources and, and we had like command staff and we had, we were three, four deep in every office.
Yep.
But this is also a requirement, or actually not a requirement, but it's a, it's, it's when we apply for grants, things of that nature, they ask for our scent. So if we don't have a scent that's updated within the last five years, we score poorly on the grant application. So that's.
When did we last approve?
Seventeen.
So we're already beyond that.
Yeah, so, um, part of this is, is it was a pretty big document and, and Mae handled out a lot, Cadet. Cadet Greeley hammered out a lot of the work in, in the, in the few months that she was here. And then it was just more fine tuning after that, after everybody got their fingers in there.
Okay.
But we can modify it. And as far as, there's a lot of things in this plan that aren't really reality, but they're a requirement of the plan, because it's a template that's issued to us.
Yep.
So we don't really have an EOC to, to speak of. We have the facilities for one, we just don't have the staffing to stand one out.
Yeah, a lot of positions.
Yeah. So because it is asked on grant applications, if we have one of these, that's another reason why the flooding, because if we go forward and ask for money from different areas to help mitigate with some of those things on the flooding list, it would be great if it said flooding right front and center.
Okay.
So.
Obviously, because the flooding impacted us at one point of our emergency vehicles getting from one side to the other quicker.
Mm-hmm.
Having to, you know, it's not a, you know, a quick.
And I would put right in the log why I modified it and, you know, what date I modified it. And then the next adoption is, it gets incorporated into the document and pushed forward.
So as you make, so if this comes back to us, you know, next meeting and, you know, we do vote to accept this, does this become a working document at that point where you can make those modifications to it?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, I, I don't have it in front of me, but there's a section in there that lays out the, the process for modifying the document.
Okay.
And, and then basically, it becomes relevant when you guys reapprove the plan five years from now.
Okay, all right, no, that's good, I, because I didn't make it through all the hundred and ten pages.
I did, I, I took me a while as well. Very thorough.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just ask the chief two questions?
Sure.
What is an EOC?
Emergency Operations Center.
Got it. And how do you spell Cadet Greeley's name?
You want to spell your name too, and get it wrong?
It's G R E A L L Y.
I'm so glad you asked her a question, because I went, it was almost a month before I heard her speak at all. She just kind of sat there and gave me strange looks most of the summer.
That's what most of us do to them.
She was awesome.
So is the request then for the chief to come back with some minor edits?
Yes.
And then perhaps Cadet Greeley is available again if you'd like, or?
Have to say.
Yes, for sure.
All right, so appreciate all the hard work so far, it looks like we're really, really close.
All right.
And we won't keep a string of another seven years to get it approved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate all the effort so far.
Thank you.
Now you don't have to stay anymore.
All right.
I appreciate you, uh, putting that off too.
Very proud of you.
So chief.
Yes.
We'll try to be brief on the next few, hopefully, because we're way behind where we'd like to be this evening.
All right, we'll speak quickly.
So, number seven, discuss and possible vote on the request from the fire chief to declare the boat motor a surplus equipment.
Chief Perkins requested his boat be repowered. He had a relatively new motor, we have an old motor. So I took his motor, we had it remounted. All the costs involved in remounting that motor were captured in his capital expenditure. And now we have a boat motor that's been well-maintained and has relatively a few mile, hours on it. And it has about a thousand dollars worth of value to bring back to the town. And I'd like to put that in surplus for the purposes of auction.
Nice, appreciate that, nice partnership between the departments there. All right, any questions to the chief?
This is number seven, number seven.
I had number eight in front of me. So I guess I'll make a motion to approve the request from the fire chief to declare the boat motor as surplus equipment.
Second.
Okay, you have a first and a second, all members in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Also, discuss number eight, discuss and possible vote on request from the fire chief to receive ownership of an emergency response utility terrain vehicle from the Bristol County Fire Chiefs Association.
Fiscal year two thousand twenty-two state budget, there was a bond bill introduced that would have paid for up to nine hundred thousand dollars with emergency rescue equipment related to MBTA expansion, the South Coast rail project. Senator Michael Roderick's was aware of that push. And about the same time, I was, I was asking for resources on an individual level for Lakeville. And he attached the town of Lakeville to that bond bill. After two years of lobbying and hard pushing and rattling cages, they've released the money in their process of procuring all of the equipment that we needed, that which includes heavy extrication equipment, heavy rescue vehicles to carry it on, which we stationed in Ubedford and will deploy all the way up to Middleborough in the case of an event. And they will be UTVs, which are basically a quad, a four-wheeler, that'll be equipped with patient carrying systems and light firefighting. And they'll be delivered to Freetown, Berkeley in, in Lakeville. And, and basically the state is buying them by our specification. They just need somebody to give them to. So they give them to the Bristol County Fire Chiefs, who I belong to. And Bristol Fire, Bristol County Fire Chiefs need to basically give to somebody that's authorized to sign for it and receive it as a, as property. And that's what I'm looking for from you.
All right, thank you, chief.
For you to receive the ownership of it.
Yep, on behalf of the town.
Not personal. I just have one quick question. So when we absorbed this into it, I mean, I, the first thing that popped in my mind was, you know, insurance, because obviously, you know, we're bringing some, an all-terrain vehicle into the, into the mech. So I'm sure that there'll be some small impacts with insurance on that, but other than that, I just.
I'll have to register it and I'll have to pay for training. Nobody would be allowed to operate it unless they've been properly trained on it. And in reality, the, the most likely use of the vehicle is going to be probably rescuing hikers and things like that. People who go down, maybe twist an ankle or break an ankle at Betty's neck, walk in the trails, one of these fire lanes. It'll be perfect for that. And it'll also be able to get out on the tracks too.
Did I miss this? Is it, there's a trailer with this too, right?
No, that's the, that was part of the, it didn't survive the capital plan. But so I pivoted and requested an ARPA.
Okay.
And I'm assuming this is a class of UTV that doesn't have a VIN, can't be registered?
It can, it can be, and it can be driven on the street. It's just sometimes these things will be requested for mutually purposes and I'd hate to drive it to, you know.
Thirty miles.
Yeah.
Stop for gas a few times, yeah.
If you can picture, it'll be funny.
Yeah. Good parade vehicle. All right.
I'll make a motion to support the request from the fire chief to receive ownership on behalf of the town for the emergency response utility terrain vehicle from the Bristol County Fire Chiefs Association.
Second.
All right, uh, we have a first and a second, any other discussion? Okay, all members in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, chief, appreciate you guys bringing that home after two years of wrangling.
Being bullied, sorry.
All right, is that all for you this evening, sir?
I'm not sure, I think so.
I think so.
All right, thank you, Pierre.
Thanks, great evening. All right, so up next, we'll be welcoming Director Marshall. So we've got item nine, discuss and possible vote on revising the physical and drug testing hiring requirement, so. Welcome.
Hi.
Thank you for all the data behind this.
You're welcome.
I know you kind of outlined this for us last time, is there anything new to be aware of?
No, so the only thing I will say is that, that second page, I did break it down for you, the ones that are required for everything, the ones that are required based off of the union contract and then the ones that are potentially recommended. So the change that I would make is the verbiage and then going through this and identifying those positions if they want to change. But the vote would be to say, in the handbook, right now where it reads all employees, it would say all employees dependent upon their position will require the physical and drug testing. So I think I put that like on the first page. It says all new employees are required to undergo a drug screening test by the physician or employees. And then it would change to say employees in certain positions that require frequent physical labor may be required to undergo a physical examination. So I don't think we need to vote position by position. It's just to change that verbiage and then, you know, make the decision of which ones need to go.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Director Marshall?
I like that it was brought back to us, you know, we had a chance to digest it, hear it, and then, you know, come back to, to weigh in. So we're basically just revising the, the employee handbook regarding the.
Yep.
Yes.
I don't know if I'm going to get this motion right, but a little attempt.
As presented?
Well, it's right down here on the, after number eight, isn't that it? Where is it? Um, after the chart? Oh, wait a minute, okay.
Is that the new one or?
It's this one.
The one with the highlight?
Yes.
Right at the bottom. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to support the recommendation from the HR director, changing the verbiage in the employee handbook to state as part of the town of Lakeville's employment procedures, all new employees are required to undergo a medical examination and drug screening depending upon, depending on the nature of their job after a conditional offer of employment has been made to the town. The examination will be conducted by a physician designated by the town of Lakeville.
Second.
That's good?
Yes.
Got it?
Yes.
Okay, first and a second, all members in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Lacy.
Thank you.
And then we've got a few job descriptions. So number ten, discuss and possible vote to approve job description for the part-time office assistant. That was revised to remove the last couple of words. Did anybody have any questions on this position for Lacy? I know you've kind of outlined, we've done it individually, but you want to just summarize the change for us here?
Sure, so right now, we're currently operating with two floaters. And our floater is substantially used by the town clerk's office. So what this does is takes the budget that we already have, so I'm not requesting anymore. I'm actually going down about fifteen thousand dollars in FY twenty-five. But it's to dedicate that person so they have hours, we know who they are, so we're not always calling. And it actually leaves us enough in our budget to still maintain those two floaters. So we would just be adding a position. But again, even with the loss in the budget, we can, we still have enough to hire this person.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, this is, you know, a long time coming. I know when we were working on the budget development for FY twenty-four, our town clerk had indicated that, once again, that there was a need for a clerical, part-time clerical position for, specifically for that office. So this is, I guess, the result of that going into FY twenty-five. So I appreciate the fact that you were able to find the, the funding, you know, to offset that. Appreciate that.
So the job itself is office assistant, but this description is specific to the clerk, because they'll be helping the clerk.
Yes, and then you're, the floaters, you'll have one floater that's designated to the select board. And then you'll have an emergency floater, which will be just that, in case there's an actual emergency.
All right. Okay, will you have any questions on this?
One I just thought of, so right now, Lillian hires like some individuals to help.
Um, one I just thought of, so right now Lillian hires like some individuals to help her out. And that gets paid out of her budget? Or is that part of the floater budget?
When they're doing like the election prep and all this stuff? I'm not sure.
That comes from her elections fund.
That comes from her elections fund?
Yes.
So she'll still have the elections fund in case.
Yes.
If fifty percent of the town starts doing, and she still needs additional help at elections, she'll still have that money in case she needs to hire something that was unanticipated.
Yep, this is actually, uh, HR funding that this is coming from.
Okay. Okay. I just don't want her to get in a bind, just.
Like we moved it from one place and put it in another?
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, more and more people are doing mail-in, you know.
She continues with her budget. It's actually the chunk of my budget that I'm switching over to support her having that part-time person.
I appreciate you identifying that.
So the only question that I have before I make a motion is where it's part-time office assistant, but it's not specific other than the general statement of duties. So is that going to be, like, should it say part-time, um, office assistant? For the clerk's office? For the town clerk's office?
I can add that in. I, it does say, yeah, because the position says office assistant for the town clerk's office. So I'll, I can put for the town clerk.
Just for, yep, just clarity. All right, well, then I'll make a motion, um, to approve the job description for the part-time office assistant for the town clerk's office. Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second, and the part-time office assistant for town clerk. All members in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Number eleven, discuss impossible vote to approve job description for part-time assessor field assistant. One half of the change to the assessors. I know you've been working with the Board of Assessors on this.
I have, so I worked with the Board of Assessors and the change is beneficial to everyone involved. So we're taking, we had the, um, assessor specialist that just retired. Um, he did both field work and office work, which then we had a part-time office assistant that was doing the assessor's office. With this change, it'll ensure that the assessor's office is open with the town hours, um, so there won't be any closures. And then the full-time assessor specialist will become a part-time field. So they'll just be in the field and then cover down in the office while the actual office assistant will be able to keep the doors open from eight to four thirty. Um, and with the change, the town actually decreased their budget by twenty thousand, which is shown in the FY twenty-five budget for the Board of Assessors. So it's saving a significant amount of money. It's going to be open to the residents, uh, for the actual office hours. And then we get that one dedicated field person.
Um, so we're on eleven.
I did have, I was a little confused. So this part-time position?
Yes.
The title is assessment specialist?
No, so the first page is the assessor field assistant.
Okay, so this is, okay, because in the position it went on to say, um, assessment specialist.
Yes.
So that's where the confusion lies. I didn't know if it was.
It's because I had taken that position and then switched it over to the part-time. But so the position needs to change to assessor field assistant. And then if you look at page two, at the top, it says assessor specialist. Um, I need to change that as well to assessor field assistant.
Okay. Because I was, I mean, I understood where you were going, but I didn't understand.
I took the old position and took things out and then my attention to detail on that was, um, less than stellar.
So it's just the titles really?
Yes, the title.
Okay, are there any other questions on the part-time assessor field assistant? Item number eleven.
Other than just maybe just having part-time in that, um.
On the top?
Yes.
Okay.
Just for consistency, because I know you've had that in other job descriptions. You've had that listed as part-time and then also in the position section, you had that listed, so. All right.
Yeah?
Nope. All right, I make a, let's see if I get this right. I'll make a motion to approve the job description for the part-time assessor field assistant.
Yes.
Position. Second.
First and a second, the job description of the part-time assessor field assistant. All members in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then the second half, item twelve, discuss impossible vote to approve a job description for the full-time assessor office assistant. Any questions on this one?
No questions, but this comment to what Lorraine had brought up, I don't know when it was, Lorraine, about, you know, this will give us more hours having the window open at the assessor's office more in line with, um, I do like, just my knowledge of the assessors, um, responsible for all aspects of motor vehicle and boat procedures, because in the past, we've had to pay someone to input it all by hand. So, um, I don't know how that's gone the last couple of years. I guess I could find out, but, um, one year, because we couldn't merge files, it had to, the boat tax had to be done all by hand, so.
I remember that.
Yeah, so that covers that responsibility.
Okay, um, thank you for highlighting the changes because they're easy to find. Is there any other discussion or comments on the full-time assessor office assistant job description?
I'll make a motion to approve the job description for full-time assessor's office assistant as presented. Second.
Okay, first and a second, job description for the full-time assessor office assistant. All members in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. And Lucy's still going to be hanging around, aren't you? All right, um, number thirteen, discuss impossible vote to appoint an at-large member on the town administrator search committee. Tracy, is this the item that we've had the most interest from in like the last few years?
Amazing, amazing interest. Perhaps we should keep these names in mind for some of our vacancies.
We have lots of those too. All right, let me just scroll back here. All right, so apologies that we're doing this again. I had to leave the meeting early last time, so thank you, everybody, for your patience.
We thought it was important to have the full support of the, the board, considering this is our last, you know, three member.
Yeah, appreciate the board members doing that. All right, so, um, numerous letters of interest. I won't read all the letters in their entirety. We've all have those, um, but I'll just read off the names. So we've got Barbara Mankowski, we've got Mr. Robert Marshall, we've got Katie DeRosa, Linda Haywell, Paul Malley, and Brittany Lapore. So that, I think, is the most people we've had interested in anything in a very long time. All great interests. Thank you for also sending in reasons for why you'd like to participate. Board members, how would you like to go about this? So this is for our at-large member on the search committee, which is one of seven?
Seven, yep.
So we felt it important to include the community on this important decision.
They can make up a committee of their own.
I know, right? Okay. I mean, this is always terrible, having to pick from so many good and interested people.
There's a lot of, um, experience here.
Yes, there is.
Do we want to give anyone an opportunity to say something?
Well, we could. Time-wise?
I didn't even know it was ten of seven.
What's that?
I didn't even know it was ten of seven.
Yeah. I know a lot of them are here this evening. Yes, ma'am?
I just asked whatever your motion is for terms to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, please?
And then we'll, twenty twenty-four, so then we'll redo it all again in July?
Yes.
Okay.
Good point. Is Brittany here? I don't know, I haven't met Brittany. Oh. Oh, okay, go.
Welcome.
I noticed that there were some of the other, um, interests, interested parties here. I just didn't know, okay. Hi.
All right. All right. Um, well, I mean, I don't even know how to pick. I'll just, I'll just say that, um, given the uniqueness of our town and where we're at right now, I thought, really, this is not, this is not to say others aren't disqualified, but I thought Mr. DeRosa's application, given that she is aware of what's going on in the town, um, she is not up for reelection, so she will be an at-large member come, uh, April second, when the FinCom term ends. She is the assistant town administrator in Metapoyset, which I think fits in well for our needs here. And she generally has very good advice at our meetings when she speaks up. So I, I thought she was a really excellent candidate, as are many of the others.
Are you making a motion? Are you making a motion? Put you in law.
I'm putting you in the hot seat now. I was just explaining my idea. I'm open to alternatives.
I mean, that was, you know, just to piggyback off of that, that was one of my thoughts too, is, you know, how, where Katie has actually worked, you know, under a town administrator, knowing, um, and knowing the town, you know, would give a, a different perspective um, to that as well. Can we give people a couple of minutes? Two minutes, three minutes?
Sure, why not?
Sure, as long as they're, they're here.
Want to go down the list?
Sure.
Okay, I'll go back to the beginning, see who was first. Is Barbara here?
She's not, I think, she messaged me earlier that she was looking to come, but she, I think she got hung up in traffic.
Okay, all right. Wasn't a fire truck pulling up in the road?
Probably not.
Uh, Mr. Marshall, you're here this evening.
I am.
Would you like to say anything, sir? Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Um, I, I've given you a couple of sheets of paper, so you, you kind of know what I'm going to say. Excuse me. Um, I think we should be looking for in a town administrator, the, the ability and desire, uh, to communicate with all people in a respectful and civil fashion, whether she or he agrees with that person or not. Uh, the ability and experience to make large group presentations that can be easily and clearly understood for all, uh, by all, rather. Uh, the ability to work collaboratively with individuals and groups, including the ability to build and work with teams, uh, the ability to seek and listen to the expertise of others, um, state and local municipal, municipal budgetary, understanding and experience, um, and extensive experience in balancing, uh, overseeing and managing large municipal budgets and department personnel with a wide variety of, uh, needs and skills. Now, that covers a very wide area, but there are some specifics there. Um, I've spent a lot of time, uh, uh, in various positions in town throughout the, uh, throughout the years and you have my resume and, and you know me, so I won't waste your time.
Well, when you talk, it's never a waste of time.
No, it's not.
Tell that to my wife, will you? Come over later and let her know.
Thank you, Bob.
Awesome, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right, uh, going by order of the packet, uh, Katie DeRosa. I think she was back there, yep. Open, Katie?
Chairman Day kind of covered what I touched on in my letter.
All of yous.
But I really am interested in serving on this committee. I've had a vested interest in Lakeville. I've done two terms on finance committee. Um, I think being aware of the issues we're facing, combined with my current role as an assistant town administrator, where I understand the ins and outs of the job and the things that aren't always in the job description, but you get hit with every single day, um, would help to identify people who have the personality suited to work in this position. Um, I agree with a lot of the traits that Mr. Marshall mentioned, um, and things you're looking for. Um, but I think it's a valuable and unique perspective to have worked in that office, um, and see the challenges and see what types of personalities do well in that, um, and how people handle different things. Um, before Metapoyset, I worked in the town administrator's office in Bridgewater as well. Um, so I've seen a lot of different management styles and how different things are handled. Um, and I'd like to bring that perspective combined with my town perspective and to this committee, um, and share that with the town and hopefully select someone who can push us in the right direction and keep us on a good track for all of us and our families.
Thank you, Katie, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Is Linda with us this evening? How are you doing tonight?
Well, thank you. Hi, I'm Linda Yule. And I'm presently president of the Friends Group. And I don't have extensive, um, knowledge about government, but I do bring a vast knowledge of managerial experience from my thirty years at Blue Cross Blue Shield. So I, I like to value my ability to be able to understand what a good manager is and what a good leader is, that they listen and they can collaborate with a number of people on different levels, that they listen and can, are able to make a concise decision based on the facts, based on what this town wants and their ability to know when to say yes and when to say no. The ability to work with different styles, to be able to make presentations in a way that the average person understands and cannot, and fully, um, be able to apply to their everyday. And I'd just like to add that I wanted to add to the, the town to help make a good decision on the next manager.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you, Linda.
And Mr. Malady, how are you coming? How are you tonight, sir?
How are you? I don't have a lot to say.
Sure you don't.
But you'll be, but you'll be well-served by any of these people on the, on, on the search committee. Um, been an active member of many different committees and commissions throughout the years in Lakeville. In fact, I served as chairman of the Board of Trustees twice and chairman of the Board of Assessors twice. And in the, in that capacity, I had a really, really good sense as to, um, how the interaction happens between the member community, the, the members of the, um, community and the town administrator, as well as the boards and the town administrator. So anyways.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of serving with Paul on the, um, recent laboratory director of the search committee. And he asked very insightful, thoughtful questions. All right. And, and Brittany? How are you tonight? Well, thank you.
Um, so I don't have any experience in a town office or on a committee or anything like that, um, but I am enrolled at BCC for executive administrative assistant. So when I saw this opening come in my email, I was like, that would be a really good opportunity to get in and gain that experience that I'm lacking and to, you know, get involved in the community. I've only been here three years, so it would be a nice thing to do.
Good place to start. And, um, so this body would also be a public party too. So at some point, those meetings start to become open session meetings. So no matter what happens.
Yeah, exactly.
You can dive in and ask them questions.
Yeah, but I have zero experience and a lot of folks had more. So by all means, my feelings won't be hurt if you don't pick me. Thought I'd give it a shot.
We were all in that position at some point.
Oh, yes, all of us.
And now we have your name too.
Yeah, yes.
And we have your face, because we, you know.
You're on camera.
Thank you, Brittany. And I believe, um, so Ms. Mankowski not with us tonight, that is everybody that had applied. So thank you, everybody. Does anybody wish to make a motion or have a comment before we move forward? All right, well, I'll step down and make a motion to nominate Ms. Katie DeRosa as a member of the town administrator's search committee with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four?
July thirtieth.
July thirtieth.
July thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four. I'm glad you're all here to help me along.
Yeah. I will second that motion.
I feel like we're putting a time limit on that and considering we're looking at hiring a search committee. I'm sorry, outside, I'd rather have them longer.
I'm sorry, outside, I'd rather have them longer than brought up against.
Right.
Can you explain, you can explain it better than we could.
All the other people are appointed till July thirty first, twenty twenty four. The Select Board annual appointments all expire July thirty first, twenty twenty, whatever.
Everybody will.
And then we have to reappoint everybody.
Reappointments in July. And all the other members of the committee have July thirty first, twenty twenty four expirations.
As well.
We're not going to dissolve it in four months.
No, no, it's just, it's just because we do quite a lot and it's just easy to do everybody at the same time.
Hold us accountable, though.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so we had a first. Was there a second?
Yes.
Apologize. Okay, all members in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. And, yes, ma'am?
I will do the appointment form tomorrow, so if you can all come in and sign sooner than later, that way we'll all be, we'll be set, we'll be full.
All right. And we've got lots of stuff open and all these people would be very well to serve on those, so.
Yeah. Um, also, Katie, so you know, either Lil or Kim is gonna swear everybody in who hasn't been sworn in at the first meeting. So you don't have to make an extra trip.
Okay. Yep.
All right, um.
Thank you, everybody, for putting in your names, but we will certainly, yeah. I know there's a lot of openings in.
Yeah, we need, we need that much interest for everything. All right, uh, number fourteen. And, uh, to anybody watching, um, we'll have other boards opening their meetings with us a little later. Um, so we're taking a little longer than we'd like, so if you're looking for another meeting starting at six thirty, it'll be a little later. Um, number fourteen, review proposals received from consultant firms for Town Minister of Search and possible vote on consultant. Welcome back. Hey. Why'd you even roll away?
I don't know. Okay. So we had originally reached out in December and had gotten three different, um,
emails back or responses, one from GovHR, one from MRI, one from Community Paradigm.
And then based off of the amount, which was over ten thousand dollars, we then had to, Tracy, as the procurement officer, reached back out with a, uh, invitation to quote, which was sent on March fifth and closed March nineteenth. Uh, based off of that, we, GovHR was significantly higher, so they no longer quoted us. Um, MRI, we received the same exact proposal as we had gotten from previously. And then we also got a new proposal from Gruel White. So those are the, the two that were within our price range, um, that got back to us. So in looking through it, I don't know if you had seen the original, um, invitation for quote that Tracy had sent out. Um, so the items to be quoted were recruit, evaluate, hire. Um, so from our original proposal that we had done last time that we looked for a town administrator, because we had already developed the town's description and we already had a general knowledge of what we were looking for for a job description, we had taken a few things out, which is what, um, Gruel and White had quoted on. However, MRI was providing the same services as they had given us before, just at a, um, lower cost based off us being a previous, um, customer of theirs. So my recommendation would to be consider MRI because they're giving us a little bit more for a little bit less. So they came at, in at, uh, nine thousand five hundred and then fifteen hundred for advertising, whereas Gruel White came in at nine thou, uh, nine thousand eight hundred and then also did not give us the cost of what the advertising would be.
Okay.
So because MRI had developed the topography of Lakeville, the document that goes out explaining who we are, what we're looking for, they really don't have to redevelop that. They can maybe fine tune it.
Right.
The drop description, um, I know we have, but obviously this board would have to review that, but, um, and they quoted the fifteen hundred dollars for advertising.
Yes.
How much was it to put that document together? I guess is the question.
Um, well, it's still a significant amount of work that they're offering to do for us. I mean, they have to do phone interviews on whatever we decide we want to whittle it down to. Um, so.
So here we put evaluate, review application, do preliminary background work, conduct telephone interviews, and send essay questions to the consultant's top twelve candidates.
I mean, it, we, I feel like they're gonna have to kind of start over anyways, because what we did three years ago, we may have since that time learned things we liked or didn't like that we would have answered differently this time around. So I agree, it probably looks like it's probably, you know, go through and fine tune, but maybe with two more board members and maybe with the others on the search committee with what they've learned, there's, I don't want to say significant changes, but just maybe like, oh, maybe now knowing backwards, it's hindsight, we've done this instead.
Right. Plus, on this other, the, um, the Gruel White one, I'm not seeing like the same kind of things. I'm, you know, well, a little.
There was less attachments at the end, I think.
So I think, I think the difference is when I had reached out originally to MRI, uh, they gave us the full service list. When we reached back out that second time for the invitation to vote, Tracy, um, had done like a really good job of putting together the items that we, we were looking to be quoted. So in response, Gruel and White said, yeah, we're willing to do this work at nine thousand eight hundred dollars and then plus that additional cost of advertising, which they don't state what that cost will be, but I'm assuming that just like MRI would be around the fifteen hundred dollars.
The other thing I would like to offer is that, unless I missed it, and if I did, let me know, um, we have, MRI gave us the, like, timeline, proposed timeline, right? And they were pretty spot on.
Yeah.
When we used them last time, and that doesn't include somebody potentially having to give notice at their existing position, so we're looking at three months plus notice period.
Right, right.
We're ways off. Um, Gruel White, I didn't see that.
I didn't either.
I might, I could have overlooked it, but.
Yeah, I didn't see much in there, um, about calendar or even process or, um, and just from working with MRI, I, I, it was a phenomenal experience working with them and, um, I would recommend to my board members that we go with MRI again. Um, it was just a, a great experience working for them, working with them.
I think you probably came on right after that.
I did. Yep.
But it was a,
Yep.
They, they hit all the timelines that they said they would. They got us a good list of candidates, and I think right now we're looking for, you know, a streamlined approach to, to say, we're already a few months behind on this.
Yep. All right, well, I'll make a motion that we, um, all right, I'll wait for this. That we accept their bid. Accept their bid. Um.
MRI.
Yeah. It's, because it's not appointing, but yeah, we'll just accept their proposal um, for the next town administrator, uh, recruitment process for the town of Lakeville. Second.
Okay, uh, Tracy, wording okay?
Sure.
Okay. All right, we got a first and a second to reward MRI of the bid. Uh, all members in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Tracy and Lacy, for putting all that together.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Just because it's a little relevant, I'm not expecting us to decide tonight, but I know that some of the information that got put together before was not necessarily premature, but I had commented, I believe, um, that the charge may not have been as accurate as it could have been. So in the meantime, Lacy and I have kind of worked together on the establishing search committee policy, which are the, part of the policies of the Select Board.
Yep.
And I don't think the charge says how many candidates to bring forward, but it does specify, and I believe you, sir, were the one that pointed this out in our last search.
I feel like you made a recommendation to them.
Yeah, so this specifies the Board of Selectmen will forward a charge to the search committee, which will include the number of finalists, a minimum of two finalists that the selectmen will want to interview.
Okay.
So I don't know if you, uh, want Lacy and I to look at the charge. Lacy can look at the charge certainly on her own and make appropriate recommendation, but maybe we can uh, make sure I have copies if anyone wants a copy.
That, and maybe MRI can give us a, um,
Yeah.
an idea of what the field is like right now.
Yeah.
Like, you're not gonna find four finalists.
But if that's the case, then, uh, you know, this is a policy which to me overrides a charge.
Right.
And the charge should be based off of what is the selectmen's policy, so.
Yep.
That was why I was a little, uh, trying to slow things down a couple of weeks ago on the charge, but.
Thank you for bringing that back.
So.
Ten years old.
Ten years old.
Ten years old.
Ten years old.
February twenty fourteen.
Yep. So if we can just, you can work with Lacy if you want to bring it back if it's not accurate. So the charge will go off of what our policy has been. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Works for me.
Yeah, that's good.
We have to, we have policy for a reason.
Yep.
All right. So we're good there? So moving along, number fifteen, revisit the discussion of the dog hearing for forty Clark Shores Road, Alicia Tetrel. So back on February twenty sixth, we had a hearing for the dangerous dog. We came up with three requirements. I'm gonna write them as I talk to make sure I remember. Uh, the dog had to be muzzled, the dicks the next day, and whenever outside, they had to have a kennel in place within the next two weeks, which would have been twenty sixth, the eleventh of March. And the final one was that they would have essentially fencing between the home and the kennel by tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty fifth, because we're gonna revisit a month later. Okay, so we've had multiple visits by the Animal Control Officer Freights. He went there the next day. The dog was muzzled. My understanding is, I had to leave the meeting early, but my understanding is that on the eleventh, they had not yet had the kennel in place, but that you sent them a letter the very next day on the twelfth.
Mm-hmm.
And that as of the fifteenth, the kennel was in place. Does that sound accurate so far?
Yes.
And there was a follow-up visit this past weekend by both ACO Freights and Member Fabian, and would you like to bring us up to date on what you observed?
Yep, so the homeowner originally, um, you know, wasn't comfortable, and I understand, um, wasn't comfortable with me, um, on the premises. But when, um, we got there, uh, they more than welcomed me to go walk around and check things out with the Animal Control Officer, which we did. Um, so I didn't touch the enclosure just because I was trying to be respectful. It is someone else's property, but the Animal Control Officer was, you know, um, there is a kennel inside of a fenced-in area. Um, we went around all the sides, shaking the fence. I mean, to me, that's about as secure as it's gonna get. I know there was some question that it was being held together with some chicken wire. I didn't. If there was chicken wire there, I didn't see it, and I looked at the whole thing. Um, I, we went on the one side and we went on the other side, and the kennel's in there. The dog can't possibly, you know, comes out the back door and it's in an enclosed area. There's also some pavement, which makes it difficult, if not impossible, for the dog to dig out in some parts of it. So I think that's the best we're gonna get, short of us deciding that it's not good enough and we wanna issue, you know, whatever, but in my opinion, from seeing what I saw, um, there's, the dog will be in, in, I just, it's about the best it's gonna get.
So i- is it that, um, so the kennel is actually, is it up against the back of the house? Is that's what actually is, is happening?
So if this is the house, bear with me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, there's a porch that comes out the back.
Yep.
And there is the, there's a fence here. And that, there's now fence here where the dog can't get out, and then there's also a fence on this side where the dog can't get out. And then there is an additional kennel in here. So there's a kennel within the fenced-in area.
So is your opinion that they have met the conditions that were outlined on the twenty fifth or twenty sixth of February?
Yes, I didn't hear the dog when I was there. The dog wasn't barking and we were walking around the property. Um, and I know, you know, I'm not always good at picking up my dog's, uh, waist in my backyard. I don't get there every day. It looks like the dog has been using it because I could see, you know, that the dog had been out there. Um, so and the only thing I would recommend, and I did, you know, speak with the Animal Control Officer, and he said that he would make sporadic visits out there just to be sure everything is, you know, as it's supposed to be.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Member Carbone, any questions?
No, I mean, I did drive by myself, just, um, and I saw the same thing that Member Fabian had seen as well.
Okay.
So.
Uh, Tracy, do we need to send a letter of any kind at this point saying they have or have not met the conditions as requested?
We can. The board wanted to vote to send a letter.
Okay. Is the board interested in doing such?
Um.
Sending a letter?
The only thing I think they should know is that we've asked the Animal Control Officer to go out.
Timely or sporadically.
To make sure it's.
Yep, I mean, I would, we didn't make it a condition, but I would strongly, strongly recommend they consider piecing together fences as much as they can and add another perimeter.
Um, the, they do have some fencing left over and, um, it, it looks pretty secure to me. Um, the only other thing, and it's from what I understand, the dog is twelve years old? Is that what we said?
Sounds about right.
Should the dog, you know, for twelve years old is a lot for a dog, but, um, should the dog pass away, whether for whatever reason, they could let us know so that, you know, we can just have that in our records too, and our animal control guy won't be going out there. For whatever reason, natural causes or, you know, whatever, just so that we're aware of the situation.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I'm good with the letter.
All right. Thank you. All hope this is the last of it. We'll go to sixteen, revisit and revise. Yes, ma'am. Sorry. Yes, sir. Go ahead, come forward.
Lieutenant Carlson, live on Eight Detroit Ave.
Welcome, Mr. Carlson.
Um, at the previous meeting, you get, one of the stipulations you guys missed was in the areas that were dark, was supposed to be a chain link fence weaved into the other part of the fence, the bottom of the kennel. That, that has not been done.
No, we stipulated that.
You did, but the exact words were that.
What was that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
You were supposed to take, so the dark can't dig underneath the kennel. Okay?
That wasn't one of the stipulations we made. We, we.
Look at the minutes.
We just approved them.
And then, um, when the neighbor gets in and they get to their house in the property and that fence is sticking onto their property.
Mm-hmm.
What's gonna happen? They're gonna want the fence off their property.
So you're saying that the fence is across the property?
Yeah, I sent you the pitches.
Yeah, it does go.
By about two and a half feet, it sticks out like this, just one section.
There's a, there's a survey and property line?
Um, I don't know what the property line is. It does overlap the other fence a little bit.
It sticks out two and a half feet.
Yeah, I don't.
At least.
I didn't see it being two and a half feet, but I'm not gonna argue with you either. Um.
I have it on the phone.
So then maybe we should circle back and just make sure that something is corrected.
Are you saying it's a seasonal resident, so they don't know?
Maybe, yeah. They don't, they're not there now. The gates are locked. But they have the straight fence and their fence is sticking out like this into their property. And then there's another sex fence, goes like this.
I mean, sure.
I know if that was my house, I'd probably just take it out.
The challenge is, I, I, I don't think any of us can confirm that the property line is exactly what the fence is. It's such a, I mean, we've all seen that situation come and go. I mean, there might be, there might be a field marker or something we could.
Right, and you know what? I also can't, you know.
Did you look at the pitches I sent you?
Yes, but again, I cannot.
I can't.
Confirm that. I would love to believe that that.
Is it on your property?
No, it wouldn't be on my property. I cut it right down.
Okay, well, then I think that's up to that neighbor to either complain to us or complain to them. Um, but to me, it looks like it's sticking out, but I don't know where the property line is. I just. Um but to me, it looks like it's sticking out, but I don't know where the property line is. I just.
That's the challenge.
Right.
And we don't know if they didn't ask either.
Right, so if, you know, if the neighbor has a problem with it, then I guess they can, you know, come and talk to us about it and.
I mean, or if, if the fence just simply needs to be buzz cut down with an angle grinder, then.
Right.
So be it.
Right. But like we said, we will continue to monitor it and send the animal control, and I'm gonna go out there myself. I've been going out there on Shore Ave. I've been there four times in the last two weeks just watching the flooding.
Oh yeah, it's crazy.
Yep, so I, you know, I uh, I'm going out there a couple of times a week. I will keep an eye on it.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
And do let us know if, if we do see any infractions.
Thank you.
Alright, sixteen, revisit the revised housing production plan and possible vote to approve. Um. Mark was here earlier. This is, oh, there you are. Hey, Mark.
He's still here.
Yeah, we're way behind. So we did get the revised plan back. We did see Serpent updated it to have some of the changes we knew. They've got the new properties in, the dump is out. And we also have the um sample letter that we would have to essentially draft and send to the state along with the HPP. Um so were there any questions on the updates that were sent to us or the letter?
I have no questions.
Nope.
Nope, me either. Was happy to see the updates. Um. Be nice to get this wrapped up.
Alright, so you're looking for a vote?
Uh, yep, a vote on the plan and to authorize, I guess, um our office to draft a letter similar to the. Example from the town of Westford, that we'll then send it to the state with the plan.
Okay. Second.
Okay, guess we got a first and a second there. Uh all members in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you very much to Planning and Serpent and everybody else that's involved.
Okay, and then we'll get a letter back saying that it's been accepted and um we're good for how many years?
A lot.
Five.
Yeah. Oh, Michelle, when did you sneak in? I thought you were stopped there.
I thought you were here earlier and then you left. No, okay.
Alright, uh. I'll try to be quick on seventeen. Update on the information pertaining to a potential forty R sub district encompassing summer hall of forty three Main Street. So back in early February, with the joint meeting with Planning, um the Select Board. Out of that came a few of us who were going to work together to gather information, reach out to Rhino Capital. See if they are interested in potentially switching from a forty B project to a forty R project, so. Um gave you uh all the details I believe I have so far um through email. It was in our packet. And the short of it is, they did not say no, but timing is certainly an essence. They will likely still file for their forty B during the spring, just so that they have one mechanism of development going down the rails. While we investigate this a bit further. Um we have potentially identified a couple of parcels we could use to extend. Uh cause the forty R sub districts have to touch. We have potentially, um thanks to Chairman Knox, identified some parcels that were actually already developed, so we're not opening ourselves up to more development. That could potentially be used to stitch together um the forty R sub districts. And then have an avenue for submitting to HLC for review and approval. So really, right now, there's nothing we can do other than, you know, Select Board and Planning Board saying, this sounds good, let's continue the investigation. Uh we have reached out to Rhino to say we need some more information because forty R sub district bylaws do have very specific. Uh. Limits in them as far as like building heights and then dimensions and such. And we would need that information from their plan to be able to translate that to a potential bylaw for a future town meeting. Um so they are open to it. Um Mark, are we waiting for anything else right now besides trying to get a meeting with Rhino together? If the board wants to continue down that path?
We need affirmation.
Yeah.
We need affirmation or, or as the end.
Uh HLC did, so Town Council and Director Darling did meet with HLC and just kinda gave them a, a rough draft. And they said that they didn't see any hard no, that they thought it could work, obviously with much more information from the developer and such, so.
So where the developer hasn't submitted um a forty B project at this point. Um if we did set a, a sub district there for um, you know, smart growth overlay there. They could actually file both the forty B and forty R. So if the forty R is in place, then they would have to file the forty R.
They could, they could do both and decide. So one of the things that we considered was um whether or not the Select Board would entertain. Trying to come up with a agreement of some kind that said that if we and um. You know diligently worked on coming up with some kind of forty R bylaw and submission to HLC, if they would agree to flip from B to R. Um if that became a, a reality, and feel free to correct anything I've said so far.
You haven't said anything wrong. It's just a clarification is they, their view is we could permit a forty B quicker.
Mm-hmm.
Because what Amy Questle had explained to us was they don't need frontage. They don't need to subdivide it. Eventually they do, but they can start the process because the access to the. Section that they proposed, the forty B, doesn't have frontage, but if they do the forty R, it requires frontage and subdivision. So that process still hasn't happened with the planning board. So those are the meets and bounds that we would need to try and craft that into the same location into a forty R overlay. But we can't do that and they're not required to do that for forty B.
Yeah. But hopefully we could get some information from them to help get an idea of where that would be.
So I'm, I just wanna make sure that we, you know, as far as our timeline or our next steps are clear. That if we do decide that we wanna redistrict and, and have the smart growth.
Mm-hmm.
Expanded. Um. Just, you know, does that happen first and then before a plan is filed?
We can't create a smart growth overlay until we have meets and bounds.
Right, okay, so that's our next step.
The general presentation that they did back in December or whenever that was.
And then they did mention that they have a change coming to that. I think they update somewhere around the end of this month or early next month. They said they'd probably release an update, like their webpage that they had put with their master plan. So there's definitely some moving pieces here where they have to do something before we really truly have the new parcel outline.
Okay.
To say this is.
So that's what we're waiting on then.
Yep, but I mean, if the Select Board is still open to the idea, we can continue trying to, I'll say, work with them. But it's really just getting information from them in order to educate ourselves on what we'd have to provide to HLC.
Okay. Can you just remind me again, it's Bob, you, Mark Knox, Nate, and is there anyone else?
Amy Questle.
Amy Questle.
But we didn't appoint Amy. She's just Town Council. Didn't we put together that little working group?
Yeah, we kind of informally at the end of that meeting said, you guys get together and. Go gather. So I think that's probably it for now. We'll, we'll try to get some more information out of them. Um they seem open to discussing. And we'll report back again.
Appreciate it.
Alright. Alright, um do we wanna do Cherry Street?
Sure, it'll be uh not that, um I can get the information out pretty quickly.
Item eighteen.
So as directed, um at our last meeting after you left, Ryan, Lorraine and I decided that. In order to go forward with this, that um Bob, myself and Erica are town treasurer. Would work together to sort of go over the whole thing. Um it was definitely an interesting find. Because um so at one point, the property was on the tax title. But what is the word, Bob? It was. Not rectify.
Redeemed?
Redeemed, yeah.
Redeemed, yeah.
And then we later, so what was in our packet was a little bit incorrect last time. Um then it was redeemed and then the town purchased it for two thousand dollars. Now, I do believe our zoning enforcement person is here, Nate. I don't know if you wanna help me out, but I can send you all a quick description, definition of uh. Uh, hold on, what's it called? In.
Infectious invalidity.
Infectious invalidity. Um so basically what happened with this property was, we had a piece of property that was basically a good property. And then our purchasing it turned it into not a conforming lot anymore. It was, that's where the infectious invalidity comes from. So um the treasurer who wrote something up for us said that in her opinion. She would like to see that lot made whole again, which would be us selling it back to the person. Um who has requested.
At five Cherry Street.
At five Cherry Street. Um because then it would go back into the tax rule, which we would want. Um also, what we would, we don't want this sort of to exist. Because we have now, instead of one whole lot, we have two parcels. That just really aren't a legal parcel. Now, the town took that for, bought it for a reason, and that reason doesn't really exist right now, which was to create a pumping station. And that hasn't been discussed in years. I don't see that ever coming forward, to be honest. Um but by offering this back to that person, we're not really setting a precedent. What we're doing is restoring what was the original parcel. Now, um I'm gonna give Bob a chance to speak. Um the only thing that the, the treasurer and Bob and I agreed was that. We should get an appraisal on the property so that, you know, we can. Figure out what it's worth and not undercharge or overcharge, but I'm gonna turn it over to Bob.
Summary, uh the treasurer collected, did solicit proposals from an appraiser. I believe she received two. She's gonna stop by tomorrow and we're gonna go over the uh proposals, but you did a good summary of the meeting and what the situation is.
Yep, and I'm just gonna ask Nate if he has anything else to add because you're our zoning person. And I bow down to your greatness on that.
But um, you know, you, you, you definitely summarized it well. Um the properties were held in common ownership in the, in the late fifties. Um they were definitely held in common ownership and therefore emerged. Um when we uh acquired the property, we separated, created this infectious invalidity in, in Lea. Absolutely correct. The only way to cure that um infection is to make it whole again. Um so this would be um what I would consider an extenuating circumstance um for um the sale of a town property. Where we wouldn't necessarily wanna just sell it to anybody. It really has to go to five Cherry Street. And, and, you know, get an appraisal on it and see where the towns got into it and come up with a number.
So I know this came to be through the um proposed a butter's property.
Yep.
Um policy that we talked about last year, but in all honesty, I don't really think it has anything to do with that. I think this is just a case where um.
I, I never thought forty five hundred square feet would turn up so much history, to be honest.
Right.
It's quite the interesting ride.
Right, um but, and again, you know, you, you had, you had left, but you know, Lorraine and I kinda figured at the last meeting that there must be more to this. And I'm glad we took the time to find it out, so um, you know.
Alright, so you've got appraisals coming?
Yes.
And then we'll figure it out from there, it sounds like. Alright, excellent. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Leo.
Okay.
Alright, um.
Thank you, Nate.
Nineteen, discuss a possible vote to approve and sign the Southeastern Regional Services Group Department of Public Works Services contracts.
Alright, I'm gonna make an emotion, emotion, motion to approve and sign the Southeastern Regional Services Group. Department of Public Works Services contracts for a term of March first, twenty twenty four through February twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Second.
Okay, at a first and a second, and we've already, yes ma'am?
Um do you want to uh um approve the town administrator to sign on behalf of the board? There's a lot of contracts to be signed and there's only one signature line.
Yeah, we can add that in that motion.
Add them in that motion?
Yeah, yes. Please include the town administrator to sign on our behalf.
Yes, please.
Second, uh.
Alright, so we got first and a second with authorizing town administrator. All members in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh twenty, discuss a possible vote to comment on a definitive subdivision plan for Pinecrest Village. I myself had no comments on this one.
I don't either. I um, I. I printed out. It's not in here, but anyways, it looks like, oh, here it is. On the, where this location is, I was curious if they were going to close it off and connect it to Beach Street. Cause I couldn't tell on this and the only reason why I'm asking because this is a private way, so we don't um. Um plow it, correct?
This is, this is a private.
Yeah, this is down in uh. Is that Clark Shores or adjacent to Clark Shores?
It's not even Clark Shores, it's off of um.
It's the other.
Robin's lean.
Yeah, Robin, it's off of Robin's lean.
Just before. Thank you, Huckleberry Shores. I'm still learning the names, Nancy.
Yeah, cause I had to, you know, look at the, the bigger map to find out where this was, but um from, it looks like that Cedarwood Place is looking to. Expand and then have the, the development, but I couldn't tell if it was looking to loop around and connect with Beach Street Drive, but. I don't know.
Don't think so, but um.
I know it's not, I was just curious.
Congested, cause I took a drive down there and it's not really congested, so. It's not like it would be piling up.
Other than that, I don't have any.
Okay, alright, so we have no comments for the planning board?
Mm-hmm, no comments.
Alright, twenty-one, discuss some possible votes to approve one day beer and wine license for the bartending service of New England LLC, April twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. One forty-one County Street.
I'm recusing myself. I don't know if you want me to just sit here or if you would like me to. Leave the room, whatever you're.
I, you, you can stay at the table, it's fine with me. Um it was a little light to read, but I didn't have any. Questions about it, Tracy. I assume you've got everything you need for this?
Yes, I have the certificate of insurance and the um check.
Okay, um and is it six thirty PM to nine PM? Looks like that, those are the hours. Just wanted to confirm, cause it was hard to.
Um so, nothing against the applicant, it's just um. Uh given location, we don't ask just a question, maybe Tracy, you know, we don't ask for who the owner is in this instance. Cause it's the bartending service that's asking for the license.
Is one asking for the license and it will be in their name.
Okay.
It is for an event that's being held at that address.
It says trivia night.
Yeah.
Okay. Right.
I don't know that it matters, but is it indoors, outdoors?
I would imagine.
Yeah, it doesn't really say.
Probably from sixteen.
Oh, April twenty, yeah, I would hope so, okay.
Yep.
Alright.
Um I'll make a motion that we approve a one day, one day beer and wine license for the bartending service of New England LLC. On April twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, for uh their location that day, which is one forty-one County Street.
I'll second the motion.
Uh from six thirty to nine PM.
Thank you for adding that, second that. Um member Fabian?
Aye.
Member Day, aye, thank you very much. One abstention or recusal? Um are there any further building committee updates?
None for me.
Okay, none for me, full colony, fire, we did that earlier.
We did that earlier.
Is there any new or old business?
Nope.
Okay, couple items of correspondence in the packet. My God, people, thank you for your patience tonight. We went way longer than we thought. Um. So, um possible executive session coming up, which actually a joint meeting with a few others, which is a little new.
Yep, um do we wanna go into executive session? Do we wanna let them open their meetings?
Yeah, I was gonna ask if Tracy had a recommendation here, because.
Um yes, they all have to open their meetings if they have a call on, so. Um if you can do them one at a time and have your numbers do, do a roll call.
Alright, who'd like to go first? EPC?
So we'll actually just be coming out of a recess because we opened our meeting previously to deal with one other agenda item. Um so I will be coming out of executive session, I mean, coming out of.
Open session.
Coming.
Recession.
Out of recess, yes. Uh so I have to read the executive session or just do a roll call vote first for.
No, you need to read the.
Yeah, read it and then.
Executive session, ask for a motion in a second. Executive session, ask for a motion in the second.
Okay, so ex, uh, pursuant to Mass General Law, section thirty-eight, uh, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body and the chair so declares and not to return to open session.
Do we have a second for EPC?
Second.
Okay.
You made the second?
John.
John Lucy.
Uh, Baker?
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call for executive, sorry.
Susan Spiller.
Barbara Standish.
Kathleen Barrett.
Yates, aye.
LaFaye, aye.
Amy Knox, aye.
John Lucy, aye.
Paulie Shire, aye.
Joseph Chamberlain, aye.
The secret. It's not that big.
All right. And the last one. Okay, wait a minute, so I've got Susan, Barbara, Kathleen, Nancy.
Nancy.
Nancy and Nancy.
Nancy and Nancy. Amy, are you on there?
Yes.
Amy, Ja- and John Lucy.
And Paulie.
And Paulie.
And Paulie.
It's a big committee.
Don't forget Michelle.
And Michelle, yeah.
All right, so then we have, do we have a quorum for open space tonight?
Yes.
All right. And are you already open as well or are you opening first?
Hmm, no.
Have you opened your meeting?
No.
Okay, so you need to, um, open your meeting.
Okay, um, um, this is open space. We're opening up our agenda on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty at the Lakeville Police Station. Um, do you want me to do a roll call also for mine?
Um, the motion on the thing first.
Not to, yeah.
Do the motion.
You, you, you'll do the motion to go into executive session and get a second, and then you'll do a roll call vote.
Also read that thing.
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's fine. Uh, executive session pursuant to MGL, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and the chair so declares and not to return to open session.
Do we have a second from open space?
Thank you.
Thank you.
David.
And now you can do your roll call vote.
Uh, Amy Knox?
All ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
You have four members, I have Amy, John, Joan and Deli.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right, and is there quorum for conservation tonight or just a couple of members present?
We have a quorum.
You have a quorum? Okay, uh, will you be opening your meeting then, please, or are you already open?
Well, we can open it.
Okay, go ahead and repeat the same process if you don't mind? This is new for all of us, I think. No, you don't wanna hear it. We always wanna hear it.
All right.
Just open the meeting.
Executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate if the chair detects, declares that an open moting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the self, public body and the chair so declares and not to return to open session.
Second. Yates, aye.
Chamberlain, aye.
Knox, aye.
Mr. Bouchard?
Um, aye.
All right, does that complete everybody but the Select Board? Okay. Uh, Select Board, entertain a motion for executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A, reason six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate if the chairman declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and not to return to open session.
Second.
Uh, member Carbone?
Carbone, aye.
Fabian?
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye, thank you. Uh, we'll be going into executive session for the final item. Thank you, Lake Cam, we'll wrap up.
Thank you, Lake Cam.
Thanks, Lake Cam.